Alexander. Henry. Cuman. Luntine.
Here.
Lewis. Morgan.
Yes.
O'Toole.
Here.
I entertain a motion to excuse Alexander.
So move.
Henry. Cuman. Luntine.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
O'Toole.
Yes.
I entertain a motion to excuse Lewis.
So move.
Second emotion.
Henry. Cuman. Luntine.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
O'Toole.
Yes.
Perhaps we should tell the audience why they're excused. I mean, just saying they're excused doesn't mean anything to anybody.
You can tell them why they're excused, please.
Well, Mr. Alexander, counsel person I worked for, I believe his foreman passed away and he's with his family. And I believe Councilwoman Lewis is ill. So those are two good reasons to excuse someone, in my opinion.
Thank you.
I entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second. Henry. Cuman. Luntine.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
O'Toole.
Yes.
I entertain a motion to accept the minutes from the previous council meeting of March 10.
Second emotion.
Henry.
Yes.
Cuman.
Yes.
Luntine.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
O'Toole.
Yes.
We'll move on to reports. Mayor Roach.
Yes, first, I'd like to, I'm pleased to announce that we have hired Gary Warren as a safety, fire safety inspector for the city of Richmond Heights. Gary is a certified safety inspector and comes to us with extensive experience in the field of fire and emergency medical services. He has performed various roles such as firefighter EMS, fire instructor, and fire inspector, inspection. He has, he worked for the city of East Cleveland for more than 20 years as a firefighter and the safety inspector, where he had the responsibility of conducting fire safety inspections along with all court enforcement activities. We are pleased to have Gary as part of the team and look forward to working with him. Right now, he is working part-time. We're planning on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday schedule. And we'll try to make him available to one of the committee, the safety committee, to meet everyone.
That's going to be the way, right?
Pardon? Yep, unless you want him earlier. Right now, he doesn't work on Tuesdays, so. The other item, the other item, I'd like to just remind everybody that we are having Easter egg hunt at Greenwood Farm this weekend. I believe that's from 10:00 to 11:30. So then you get, you can get tickets here at the, it's $2 a ticket here at the Rec. department.
Is it on Saturday or Sunday?
That'll be a Saturday. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Fire Chief Newman, do you have a report?
A short one this evening. Thank you, Council President Henry, Mayor Roach, and members of council, members of the audience. On Monday, April 13th, we'll have a CPR course. It's a heart saver CPR course and it's going to be held at the Richmond Heights Fire Station on Monday, April 13th, from 6:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. The Division of Fire does this in partnership with University Hospital Richmond. We offer them bi-monthly. CPR courses are free to residents in the city of Richmond Heights. The Heart Saver CPR course is a classroom video-based instructor-led course that teaches adult CPR and use of an automatic external defibrillator, as well as how to relieve choking in an adult. If anybody is interested, call me, Chief Newman, at 216-383-6304. Class size is limited to 12 students per class, and they are free to citizens, residents of Richmond Heights. We've had six people sign up so far, so we're about half full. Weekend before last, we had a water pipe break in the city of Richmond Heights on the airport near Gate, or on Richmond Road near Gate 2 of the airport. And luckily, it was a good-sized main, was repaired in about 24 hours, a little longer than we thought it would take. But during that, we used something called Ready Notify. It's our notification system that's provided to us by Cuyahoga County. It sends out messages to our citizens via phone call, via text, via fax, and eventually, even on our website, it'll come across via web banner. I'm encouraging everybody in Richmond Heights to sign up for this outstanding notification system to stay informed for events like this. And it's very easy to do. You can get to the hyperlink via our website. There's one for Ready Notify. Or you can go to Cuyahoga County's website to sign up. If anybody doesn't have access to a computer, or there's just no way that they can get online to sign up, they can call me at 216-383-6304, and I will guide them through the signup process. I'll actually make the keystrokes on their behalf. With that, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. What date is your CPR course?
It is on Monday, April 13th.
Thank you. Police Chief Rowe.
Thank you, Madam President, Mayor, council members, and citizen. Last week, we received a laser radar unit from the Ohio Department of Transportation, Public Safety side of that, for our participation in the click it or ticket and drive sober or get pulled over programs last year. The unit's worth about $3,000, and actually, we did need it, so it will come in handy.
Excuse me, when you say you receive it, did you buy it, or did you get it for free?
We got it for free.
From who?
Department of Public Safety. State of Ohio.
Thank you.
On last Wednesday, March 18th, the five mayors of the spanned communities and five police chiefs met to discuss the proposed budget for span for 2015. The budget was approved by the mayors. The total budget for span for 2015 is $120,400. Actually, the way that's broken down this year is that $86,700 is for all of the units except the drug unit, and that will be paid for by contributions from the five communities. We thought our contribution was going to have to go up from 2014. It was $14,000 in 2014, but we lost the village of Gates Mills, which means we lost their $14,000 contribution, and we thought we were going to have to make up for it. But our span drug unit's been pretty successful. They've been able to get a lot of forfeited money. So the member communities will contribute to pay for the regular operation. The span drug unit will be funded by monies that have been forfeited through various arrests and criminal cases that they've conducted. So their budget will be $33,700. So we did manage to keep our contribution for 2015 the same as it was in '14, which was $14,000. Also, as far as police activity so far this year, the Part 1 crimes are up 22%, which is 14 crimes. Part 1 crimes from the same time last year. Burglaries are down 92%. This time last year, we had 13. So far this year, we've only had one. Unfortunately, our assault, robberies, thefts, and auto thefts are all up. Calls for service are up about 2%. Our arrests are up 2%. Overtime is up 19%, primarily because at the beginning of the year, we started out with two officers out on, with non-duty-related medical issues, so we did have to fill the shifts. One officer was back towards the end of January, and the other one is due back April 10th. The mall accounted for 5% of all calls for service and 10% of the arrests. The apartment complexes are accounting for about 18% of our calls for service. That's all I have.
So I have a question, Chief. Under these circumstances, could the county supplement our forces?
I'm sorry?
Could the county supplement our forces, like when we're down like this? We have two people out. Could they?
They'll only, they'll only send their impact unit out for no more than two weeks. They won't send them out permanently until we get back, you know, to our regular staffing.
Thank you. When do we get back to regular staffing? When will those other people return?
Well, all except Patrolman Davis, he'll be back April 10th. So we'll be back.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Building Commissioner Phil Seeholt.
Thank you, Council President Henry, Mayor Roach, and members of council and residents. I have a brief report tonight. Our activity for the last several weeks has been centered around updating the inspections of the common and public areas of many of our large apartment complexes. We've inspected the common areas of Richmond Park, Dorchester, and Loganberry Apartments, which together represent many hundreds of apartments in Richmond Heights. And we've documented all of the issues and problems that we found at those, at those properties and sent them, sent copies of those to the managing companies for those apartments. As to date, we've now started re-inspecting Dorchester, which has corrected about 95% of all of the violations to date. So I believe that we're making good progress on some of the sites. We still have a long way to go on Richmond Park and Loganberry. But as the mayor said, we now have a, another part-time employee in our, in the presence of our fire safety inspector, and he will come in very handy in helping us re-inspect these apartments and get them back into a safe condition. So we'll continue to do that and continue to stay on top and prioritize our time and our inspections in the areas where it appears that they're needed the most, and continue to follow up on those inspections. And the only other thing I wanted to report in Crystal's absence was that we had a planning commission meeting on March 11th here in these council chambers. And at that planning commission meeting, we invited in members of the managing staffs of all of the mall properties. We had the manager of Penny's. We had several other managers of several other mall tenants, in addition to the several neighboring residents in that area. We had a good discussion about the condition of the mall and the future of the mall. We discussed a little bit the closing of Macy's. Macy's is now closed, as you all know. Macy's is self-owned. It's not owned by the mall. Macy's owned the store and the property, which is 160,000 square feet on two floors. We discussed some options, some ideas for prospective tenants for the new Macy's, for the new, a new owner of Macy's. The mall itself now is now, the mall which was previously a Simon Company mall, is now owned by a smaller mall property manager by the name of W.P. Gimcher and Associates. We believe that the purchase of the mall by Gimcher is going to be a good thing for Richmond Heights because Simon had approximately 160 properties, so we were a relatively small fish in their large ocean, whereas Gimcher has more like 40. And they've, they've expressed their willingness to spend some money to upgrade the mall once they, once they've got a plan to do that. And we're going to send them the minutes of our meeting that we had as soon as those minutes are approved by the attendees. But there were some good, there were some good ideas proposed, good ideas insofar as creating business up at the mall. One of the, one of the more out-of-the-box thoughts that I believe one of our council people had was that since, since a lot of, since I would say most of the tax money from the mall goes to the Lynn Hurst and South Euclid school system, that maybe, that maybe those people from Lynn Hurst-South Euclid might start having more events at the mall to create traffic and create business. Prior to that, we were thinking about what Richmond Heights could do, or what possibly Richmond Heights School District could do. But if we can interest, if Crystal or one of our, one or other people can interest those other school people to maybe hold some of their events down at the mall, we may be able to generate some new traffic. We also talked about very possibly some, the nature of some new anchor tenants to be used at the Macy's. We've been told, for instance, that the area is a little bit oversaturated with department store-type businesses. So very possibly, the new owner of Macy's will not be a department store such as Macy's. It might be a specialty store such as a sporting goods store, or some other type of specialty store. Could even be grocery-related. We've been told that in many areas of the country, large grocery stores anchor malls. So we're, we've got some good marketing people working on the issue. Gimcher has committed to us that they intend to see a new owner for the Macy's store as quickly as possible, and we're going to continue to work on that, and we welcome any ideas that any of the residents here have. I would suggest that you call Crystal during the week. Crystal Best, our economic development person, and give her your ideas if you, if you have something constructive to add. And that's my report.
Thank you. Finance Director, Ms. McHale.
Thank you, Madam President, Mayor Roach, members of council and residents of the city. My report will be brief. I am going to speak a little bit on tax collections. We did receive the second collection for income taxes for March. Came in just short of $500,000, $496,966. This is a decrease from last year. One thing I can account for is it appears that there was a bit of a spike last March. I think it had to do with catching up with some of the collections from 2013. I don't really see this as something to be overly concerned about at this point, given the fact that we are still about a quarter percent of where we are historically, ahead a quarter percent of where we are historically through three months. I will keep an eye on this, obviously. I think we should know more. We're still fairly early in the year, of course, but we should know more of how things will shape up over particularly the next two months, which tend to be our heaviest income tax collection months. But thus far, I just want to make council aware that we are still on line with what we're calling a flat projection. Yes, sir?
What is the difference from last year to this year?
It was, it's 18% difference, but we had a collection of $610,000, which, which, in '13, it was $359,000. So that kind of jump is...
$400,000 knowledge?
That kind of jump is highly out of the ordinary. So what it did now is it's normalized. We're now essentially at around $500,000. So it's roughly $100,000 less than last year, but it's also, you know, $150,000 ahead of where it was the year before. Not, not, you know, the year prior to last year. So, you know, last year was unique. It was an aberration. But as you're looking at the year and how we collect normally, normally, it's between 22.5% to 23% through the first three months. We're at 23.25% this year of what our projection is. So we're still in line with what we're projecting for the year. But as I said, last year was unique, so now what we're seeing is sort of a normalization of what we would normally see. Wanted to talk a little bit about the fixed asset project and give you an update. The mayor was asking me about that this morning. And I've been in touch with, of course, Paul Ellis has been working closely with us on that and the people with ZUPCA. We've obviously, we've completed the physical inventory for all the equipment. Last week or so, ZUPCA has been asking questions regarding land improvements, recent land improvements, things like, or property improvements like parking lots. You know, they're trying to get a handle of some of the valuation on that. I know that Paul has spoken with Phil and also spoken with the service director about that, so we're working very closely with them and trying to get ZUPCA what they need for that. I know I talked to Lee this past week about that as well. I think once they get those questions resolved, they'll be able to, they'll be at a point where they'll have the information all together in terms of what they need to compile. They'll have the valuation information updated. And at that point, what we're going to do is coordinate between ZUPCA and Rita, who basically is our technical support for our accounting and fixed asset systems, and work on taking the data that they have compiled and integrating that so that it will be just a straight upload into the system. And then from that point, we should be able to maintain and hopefully, you know, go a long way toward, as you are aware, that was one of the audit findings over the last couple of years. So we're making good progress. Right now, the ball's a little bit in ZUPCA's court, but we see that, we figure that once that's done, things will move ahead, and we should be coming to a resolution fairly shortly. And that's my report for this evening.
Thank you. I have one question. Reconciliations, are we done for 2014, or are we on 2013?
I'm sorry?
Reconciliations.
There were, there are still some things, issues in '14 that we are clearing up at this point, but '13 is, '13 is done.
'13 done, thank you. Service Director? He is out, so we need to entertain two more motions to excuse Karniski and Economic Development Director. We don't think, oh, we don't do that, oh, good. Okay, so both of them are excused. They both sent notices. So we'll move on to Mr. Courtney.
Just one item, Madam President. The mayor, the building commissioner, and the county department of public works this morning to go over their 2014 report on the operations under standard security measures. That's fiscal '14, which November is from October to September. We had a surplus in the budget at the beginning of the year, and we developed income over expense again last year. So we have a comfortable balance going forward. They're projecting a smaller surplus this year that led to a discussion of allocating part of that $2.70 support fee with all the residents paying their incentive, and so we're basically having to allocate part of that to storms to a fund because of the new PA regulations, there's going to be a lot of storm work, we haven't had before in the past. So we'll be bringing that forward to the discussion committee. And that will necessitate a substantial change in the 20-year-old income that we have at county right now. I believe that can distribute it, probably is a better way to put it, because we probably wouldn't. Those are some food for thought for incident service committee.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. It's time for audience comments. Any audience comments? Pardon me? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I'd just like to add to Chief Rose's report that Pastor Denise made a presentation at our church, the Bible Bible, on March 13th to the women of the church who wanted to have someone from our police department come speak to them about crime within the city and staying safe and those types of issues. And Pastor Denise made a very positive impression, and I got a lot of, I didn't happen to be able to attend, but I got a lot of positive comments from women who did attend about the professionalism and communication. And I just was very proud to hear all the things and compliments they gave about them. And so we are very lucky to have the kind of people that we do a ton of things for.
That's great, thank you. Ms. Wilson, although we know you, can you state your name and address for the clerk?
Mary Willson, 416, L. Martin Mall.
Thank you. And I agree, Officer Denise is very professional. Thank you. Any more comments? Okay, we will move to old business then.
Ordinance number 20, 2015. Introduced by Alita, in her second reading. An ordinance amending sections 1151.03 and 1123.04 of the zoning code to provide for indoor entertainment facilities to be conditional uses in the B1 local business district and declaring an emergency.
Mr. O'Toole, would you, well, it sounds like you're going to, but anyway. Are you going to comment on this, Mr. O'Toole? Let's introduce by Alita.
It might be appropriate for our moderator to comment.
That's what it said, it provides for indoor entertainment facilities. So the judicial movement has been motivated. And make the number 270, so you know that, and then, and those people coming forward to the city that will be, will do stuff like that.
Actually...
Mr. Field, Mr. Seeholt?
We should have Mr. Seeholt comment. He made, he made the most pertinent comments in our previous meeting, if you wouldn't mind commenting on that.
Thank you, Councilman O'Toole. Section 1, I can read some very brief excerpts from the ordinance. Section 1 of the, of the new ordinance identifies indoor entertainment facilities as a building that doesn't exceed 5,000 square feet, or a space, a tenant area that doesn't exceed 5,000 square feet. That, in the, in the, in the little plazas in Richmond Heights that are in the B1 zone, there are a couple. The B1 zones are gathered around the intersection of Richmond Road and Chardon Road, and around the intersection of Richmond Road and Highland Road. These small business zones that are completely surrounded by residential houses on those corners are the B1 local zones. They're called neighborhood businesses, as opposed to the mall area, which is called a regional business zone. So in a, in a neighborhood business zone, the tenants are smaller, they're a little quieter, they're less traffic intense. And that's why, in the, in the plazas in our area, 5,000 square feet would represent maybe two tenant bays, possibly three, but more than likely two tenant bays. So they're smaller businesses, they're not great big businesses. And then section 2 further identifies the use as an indoor entertainment facility, and it shall mean a building or part of a building devoted to providing entertainment indoors for a fee. for a fee, including but not limited to such activities as music, live performances, and games such as pinball, video arcades, computer games, billiards, table games, and similar small-scale entertainment and amusements. So it'll involve, we don't have any uses in those districts right now that involve anything having to do with computers. I come, put some video games up in the food court of the mall and asked if they could do a larger arcade. We're not sure that that's a great idea up at the mall right now. There wasn't a good place to do it anyway, but smaller type of arcades and spaces like that are basically what we're talking about here, so it's indoor entertainment. Now, I would also caution that what we're approving here is a change to the zoning code that would just permit that if somebody would have such a use planned, a conditional use means that they have to actually come into the planning commission and have the planning commission review the specifics of their conditional use, make a recommendation to council on whether they think that's a good idea or not. So this is not a license for anybody to open necessarily. This makes it possible for them, as it stands right now, these uses in that B1 district are prohibited uses, so they're closed. What this would do is open the door for them to the planning commission and say, here's what we would like to do, and we think it's a good location, here's our specifics on parking and other things that the planning commission would want to know about, and then the planning commission makes a recommendation to council on whether they think that particular conditional use is a good one. So that's what we're looking to rule on tonight, and that's what council is looking at to make this particular entertainment facility a conditional use in the B1 local business district, neighborhood business district.
Thank you, Chief. Very good explanation. Enter take motion?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to suspend the rule.
Let's second that motion, please.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Move for passage?
Second.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Morgan?
I'd like to qualify my vote, if I may. I will vote yes, however, I understand that this is going to the planning commission, and there's further study to be done on this, so I'm voting yes so that we can proceed with it and finalize it at another date.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
You want the new business? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Ordinance number 20, 2015 passes unanimously.
Resolution number 24, 2015, introduced by Mayor Roach and council, first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement through the Ohio Department of Administrative Services Cooperative Purchasing Program for a new fire chief vehicle for the Division of Fire. Declaring an emergency.
Do we, we have to amend it first? Motion to amend it? To amend?
Motion to amend, to declare an emergency.
Second.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rule? Do you want to discuss?
Second. Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Resolution 24, 2015 passes unanimously. Oh, I'm sorry.
Move for passage? Second.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 24, 2015 passes unanimously.
Resolution number 25, 2015, introduced by O'Toole, first reading. A resolution authorizing the city to purchase sodium chloride rock salt through the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program for the 2015-2016 winter season.
Entertain a motion for amendment, Chief, please.
Motion to amend, to declare an emergency also, please.
Second.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rule?
Second.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Move for passage?
Second.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Resolution 25, 2015 passes unanimously.
Resolution number 26, 2015, introduced by O'Toole, first reading. A resolution to authorize a contract with the Auditor of State of Ohio for financial statement audits for the year 2013 and 2014.
I make a motion to amend this ordinance to declare an emergency.
Second.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes. I make a motion to suspend the rule.
Second motion.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Move for passage?
Second.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Luntine?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Resolution 26, 2015 passes unanimously. I also like to comment, the reason, well, not exactly the reason, but we had to make amendments tonight because we have deadlines for, we had to meet within the next week or by the end of this month, so therefore, we had to make the three amendments tonight as emergencies. Thank you. Any more legislation to discuss tonight? All right then. I move to...
Motion to adjourn?
Adjourn the meeting. Can we adjourn? Thank you.